Okay, wonderful. And can we have roll call?
Mr. Axon, Ms. Orford, Mr. Haun, Ms. Shaw.
I'm here. Would you like to read the public hearing announcement?
Sure.
Okay, perfect.
The Beaver Creek Township Zoning Commission is holding a public hearing at Fire Station number 61, 2195 Dayton-Zenia Road, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45434, on Thursday, April 15, 2021, scheduled to begin at 7:30 p.m. The hearing will take place in the fire station vehicle bay to accommodate the expected number of attendees. The purpose of the hearing is so the commission may review and act on an application by property owner LSRM McIntyre Limited Partnership to reclassify a parcel into the Residential Plan Unit Development, or RPUD zoning classification. The parcel being considered for rezoning is B03000200360000100. The parcel is located near the intersection of Kingsway Drive and Slater Court. This action will be considered a zoning map amendment. The notice was repaired and processed for publication by zoning administrator Max McConnell in accordance with all legal requirements. And there you go. Anything else? That's the public hearing notice, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that technicality here. Well, I was worrying about whether or not we had mics. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Ankeny, Ms. Orford, Mr. Haun, Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So what I've done is prepared a PowerPoint presentation to kind of go through the pieces of my staff report. So I want to start with an introduction. This case is a zoning map amendment to change the parcel owned by McIntyre Limited Partnership, LSRM Limited Partnership, from current zoning of A1 agricultural to residential plan unit development, RPUD. So what that means is it's currently zoned agricultural, and it will be, if this rezoning request is successful, it'll be rezoned for the use of residential homes. This action is the first step in a lengthy process from getting ground agricultural to be homes being built on it. Basically, if this rezoning is approved, the commission will hear a specific site plan application from the applicant of whomever is ending up developing this parcel will have to come through the same body. They'll have to provide much more specific information about the layout of the various buildings, where the streets go, where the utilities go. And all those things are, must be reviewed and kind of accepted by various agencies, the Green County Engineer, Green County Sanitary Engineering, Soil and Water Conservation, various other agencies, Green County Regional Planning. So this is just step one in a multi-step process. And there are a number of other public hearing opportunities for folks to weigh in on this eventual development. So this hearing was originally scheduled for March. As many of you know, we've been in communication, it was delayed at the request of the applicant. So the applicant has met with a number of the residents. I've met with a number of the residents who have concerns. The applicant decided that he wanted to address a lot of those concerns, so we delayed this proceeding until we could get that information. So that is why it was delayed. That's why we're here today. The really important question to be answered in this hearing, the rezoning hearing, is is this parcel, the parcel in question, suitable for the proposed land use, which in this case is residential dwellings? That is the question to answer here. Not is it suitable for 300 homes or 150, not is it suitable for large lots or small lots, but is it suitable for putting homes on this land? So it's important to keep that major question in mind as we go through the rest of the hearing. Other details of the site's configuration, again, density, ingress and egress, specific solutions, where the utilities are going to go, those things are handled during the specific site plan approval process. It's laid out in our code. There are a number of criteria that an applicant must meet. They must be reviewed and approved by a number of regional and local bodies. So it's important to make the distinction between the two hearings. So some information about the parcel. Again, the parcel ID is up here, it was read in the public hearing notice. It's 177.906 acres, and that's gonna, all of it's proposed for rezoning. Of that acreage, 58.32 acres are to remain as undeveloped wetlands. I'll speak to the arrangement for that in a little, in a little while. The current use is, again, agricultural with some forested floodplain, and the current zoning is A1 agricultural. There are some existing wetlands, as I mentioned, with the sale of those wetlands pending to the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association. It's a local organization well-known for conserving wetlands in the Beaver Creek area. The developer has partnered with them to kind of allow them to take control of the wetlands area, place a conservation easement on it, which means no development will occur there. And then the Wetlands Association plans to essentially add this area to their network of the Spotted Turtle Trail, which is a multi-connecter path that goes throughout the entire township and even more of Green County. And again, there is existing floodplain on the western area of the parcel, we'll explore that in more detail in a little while. I've got a map here, so we can all understand where we're at geographically. The red line that you see is the parcel in question. To the north are two residential neighborhoods, Kingsway and then the Beaver Hill Estates. To the east is Spindletop, which is a RPUD of its own. To the south, it's zoned A1, but the use that we see is conservation, so following the river there. And then also, there are some residential uses there as well, some large lot residences, although we don't see really any agricultural use in that area. So I want to talk a little bit about the developer's intent. This is part of the information that we require during the application process. We want to understand what the developer wants to eventually build. So again, this wetlands area that we were talking about is to be owned by the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association. The developer intends to include it as common open space in this PUD, which essentially means it would be open usable area, not only for the residents of the PUD, but also because of the agreement of Beaver Creek Wetlands Association usable to all residents, not just of the township, but really anyone who chooses to walk through this trail system. The Beaver Creek Wetlands Association supports this proposed development strategy, they sent in a letter of support, they believe in this project as well. The developer estimates that about 250 homes will be built in this proposed PUD if we assume a lot size of about a third of an acre. The applicant estimates about 650,000 square feet of new home floor area. The development cycle, the kind of timeline for this that the applicant indicated, is that grading work they hope to begin in September of this year. So that's, you know, moving the dirt around on the site, making it ready for utilities and foundations. And eventually, a development cycle of seven years over multiple phases of development. So a portion of the homes will go in, and then a portion, another portion of the homes will go in and so forth and so forth until they are completed. The applicant has requested the permitted and conditional uses that are already in Article 5 of our resolution. So this is essentially the single-family residential district that we have. He's mirrored those uses, which just include the things you'd expect in a neighborhood, homes, you know, sheds, garages, things incidental to residential life. But they've also asked for one more use, which is pedestrian recreation facilities. And this goes to the Spotted Turtle Trail, and maybe some infrastructure, like a small parking lot, or benches, some other things that would need to be included as a permitted use for this agreement. I want to talk a little bit about, so I gave you guys the number of homes, I gave you guys the acreage of the, of the parcel. But what that, what we use, those are numbers that we use to calculate what's called the density, which is the dwelling units per acre in that area. And that's often what, it's kind of the development metric that we use to say how, how many homes can really fit in this area, right? What density is allowed? I just want to talk about the densities of both the proposed PUD and some of the surrounding neighborhoods. So this is a comparison of the densities. Hunter's Ridge and Hunter's Point are the PUD neighborhoods to the west. They have an average density of about 1.7 dwelling units per acre. Spindletop, which is the residence, or the PUD to the west, or I'm sorry, the east, is 1.64 roughly dwelling units per acre. The proposed PUD with 250 homes and over 170 acres is 1.404, so just about 1.41 dwelling units an acre. And then Beaver Hills Estates in the Kingsway Drive neighborhood to the north are closer to about .4, .5 dwelling units an acre. So that gives you an idea of how dense comparatively, and this is the, this is what we think is the potential maximum, 250 homes. It could be substantially fewer than that, once additional work is done on the site to determine where, you know, residences can and can't be built, soil conditions, where the utilities have to go. So realistically, a dwell, a density of 1.4 dwelling units per acre is right in kind of the middle of the neighborhoods that are in the area. So it's important to recognize that. I know we've, we've had a lot of comments come in worrying about, you know, higher density neighborhoods, or quote unquote cookie cutter homes, some of these concerns. This, I hope, illustrates the kind of neighborhood that the developer hopes to, to eventually build. Speaking of which, we've got...
May I ask a question?
So we have our concept plan that developer presented here. It's a little small on my screen, so I'll try to help you guys follow along. This shows ingress and egress, so entrance and exits, coming in off Kingsway Drive and Fair Trail Way. It does show that the development does not reach into the floodplain area, which is new. The original development drawing had roads and infrastructure going into this floodplain area. After conversations with the floodplain administrator, the developer has kind of modified right now those plans. So this is a rough concept of the layout of the roads, and that's all right now. It does not show how many houses will go on each road. That information, again, is required at the specific site plan phase of this process of, of developing. So I want to go into some of the details. You know, this office did a lot of digging and had a lot of conversations with a lot of agencies, following all the comments that we received from residents. So we, we're going to try to address some of what we found out here. First of all, again, for traffic, the entrances and exits is expected from Kingsway and Fair Trail. Two entrances are required in Beaver Creek Township for neighborhoods. This is fire department regulations, it's, it involves emergency response times, you know, if one, if you have one entrance into a neighborhood, and let's say the third house on the left, somebody needs fire, and they're there blocking the street, and then someone at the end of the road has a heart attack, it's very difficult for EMS to get around an existing emergency and, and deliver quick and decisive care. So that's why we require two entrances to any resident, any neighborhood that has more than 30 homes in it. We've spoken with the Green County Engineer. She has requested that a traffic impact study be conducted for the specific site plan approval process. This is something that is always done for specific site plans. We are just as interested and, and concerned as any of the residents that the development of this will not result in, you know, additional traffic fatalities, unmanageable congestion, some of these things. So the county engineer is aware of this, it is aware of the concept plan, and did not immediately raise any objections, just said, please provide me a traffic impact study to review during your specific site plan. The applicant and staff have together explored a possible entrance off of Ankeny. I know we've received a lot of comments suggesting that. We've determined this to not really be feasible, there are a number of reasons. A lot of them have to do with the Green County Engineer and her ability or willingness to, to have an entrance like that, but some of it involves private interests, there's some access easements issues, there's really, it's really not feasible to, to put in an entrance off of Ankeny. So I know some of you were very concerned about that, and some of you were really suggesting that the entrance come off Ankeny, so I wanted to address that here. So for utilities, the, there is an overhead electric easement, there's actually two that exist on the parcel, they run north-south. The developer is going to have to take these into account when eventually submitting a specific site plan for approval. No buildings can go under them for a certain radius essentially around them, so that'll have to be taken into account. The staff and applicant have had discussions with the Green County Sanitary Engineering Office. They've indicated that the PUD can connect to sanitary sewer, they'll probably have to use a lift station. Any lift station will result in a maintenance fee levied on the users of that lift station. So essentially, the residents of that neighborhood, and no one else, will have taxes levied on them to pay for the maintenance of that system. So it is not a, it's not an undue burden to surrounding neighborhoods, it is paid for in full by the residents of that neighborhood. We've also worked with them to discuss where, how they'd connect to water. The most, the best guess they have right now is that water will be served from the neighborhoods in the east, there's lines going through that neighborhood, and they're just going to extend them out onto the property. I'm going to talk about some environmental details. So the northwestern portion of the parcel, again, contains some wetlands. This portion of the parcel is being sold to the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, it'll be placed under conservation. It will not be developed, and it will be classed as common open space. Again, they've provided a letter of support for this strategy. It's known in planning circles as cluster development or conservation development is a strategy where remaining areas for development that are close to natural resources, use the natural resources as part of the open space calculation, and then kind of concentrate the development away from those natural resources to protect them. So we're, you know, we've spoken with BCWA, we've spoken with the developer, we like this plan. The county engineer has expressed support for this kind of development as well. The southwestern portion of the parcel is located in the floodplain. The applicant has met with the Green County Floodplain Administrator, which is basically the agency that provides permits for developing in the floodplain, if that's even possible, and provides restrictions and regulations for people who want to build in the floodplain. It was explained to me that the challenges of developing this site were kind of explained to the applicant, and that's what resulted in a bit of a, of a changed application, you know, looking again at what was possible on the site. If the application moves to the specific site plan phase, and the applicant indicates that they'd like to build anything in the floodplain, we're going to require that extensive documentation is provided, that they've spoken with the floodplain administrator, that their plan for developing in the floodplain is approved. So it's something that we're very aware of, it's something that is not easy to do, and again, it would be something that would require a number of agencies to sign off on to even start considering this. Staff recommends requiring that any specific site plan, again, be reviewed and approved by the county floodplain administrator. I've got a couple more environmental details here. The forested area along the north of the parcel may be a habitat for endangered species, potentially the Indiana brown bat. There are other potential endangered species in the wetlands area. So staff recommends that any specific site plan must include an environmental impact study, which identifies any potential endangered species or their habitats. And then further goes on to explain what development techniques, what strategies are going to be employed to avoid damaging or destroying those habitats, or conversely, like we, like with the Indiana brown bat, there are certain times of the year where those habitats may be removed to minimize their impact to the species. Those are the kind of things that we're going to require during the specific site plan process. I wanted to show you the floodplain map, so you can kind of understand what I'm talking about here. The dark blue area is what's called the floodway. It's the area essentially right adjacent to the river. And then this lighter blue hash area is called the floodplain. This is essentially, you know, at its worst, where will the water reach out to during a flood event? And so, again, that is why this area is not really being considered for development at this time. If that changes during the specific site plan phase, like I said, we've, we've got a number of regulations that we're going to require, so we will not be approving any work in the floodplain that hasn't been extensively reviewed. So I've got a series of recommendations that staff hopes will be placed on any approval if that is what the commission chooses. So the first one, we recommend that you do approve the rezoning of the parcel from A1 to RPUD with the permitted conditional uses, I'm sorry, the permitted and conditional uses allowable in Article 5 of the zoning resolution with an additional permitted use of pedestrian recreation facilities, such as walking trails and any associated structures or improvements. We recommend that you allow the 58-acre area, which is to be placed under conservation by the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, to be counted towards the open space requirements for the proposed PUD. We recommend that any specific site plan submitted for this PUD must include the following information. So one, proof of communication with the Green County Floodplain Administrator, and a detailed summary of techniques which will be employed if or when developing in or adjacent to the floodplain. A traffic impact study, and congestion mitigation strategies which have been approved by the Green County Engineer. Proof of communication with the holders of easements for overhead electric lines, noting how the configuration of the neighborhood takes such easements into consideration. Such configuration shall be reviewed and approved by any agencies deemed applicable by the Community Development and Risk Department, that's us, that's zoning. An environmental impact study determining the existence of any endangered species or their habitats on the parcel, and a detailed summary of techniques which will be employed when developing the site, such that it conforms to all laws and regulations pertaining to the existence of these species or their habitats. And finally, a detailed summary of site development techniques which will be employed to minimize the impact on the wetlands in wooded areas on or near the parcel, to be reviewed and approved by any agencies deemed applicable by the Community Development and Risk Department. And finally, we put this on every PUD, but any site plan submitted for this RPUD will be subject to the approval of any agency or entity with the jurisdiction or authority over any aspect of the proposed development, or to any other entity at the discretion of the Community Development and Risk Department. So what that essentially says is, a site plan, specific site plan comes through, and you guys are going to see it in a public hearing, we will require not only any agency that we think has legal authority, again, Green County Engineer for Traffic, Sanitary for Water and Sewer, but any agencies that we or you feel should weigh in, we can require that as part of the, so it won't even be an application until they get that information. So those are the recommendations that staff has provided. And now, if you have any questions for me, or if you'd like to save them, I believe the applicant has prepared just a little bit of information as well, if you'd be willing to hear that. And then that is my staff report. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. And just for a matter of order, so that you understand what's happening, we will hear, we hear from the staff first before we start to ask questions, then we'll hear from the applicant, and after that, we will open the public portion of the meeting for you. Hearing that, ready to hear from the applicant.
Do you want to head up to the podium there?
Good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Mark McIntyre. I have the property there. Can you hear me? How about now? Can you pick it up? Okay. All right, can you hear me now? Great. My name is Mark McIntyre. I live here in Beaver Creek, over in the Fond Ridge Development. Previous to that, I did live on the farm in question. I grew up on the farm. My father and uncle grew up on the farm, my grandfather bought the farm. So we have a longstanding relationship with the city of Beaver Creek. You know, when we got into this process, it was rather interesting, because I'm not so familiar with the development process, but we've spoken at length over the past couple of years with the various agencies that Max had mentioned, and just took, taking feedback. Thank you. Taking feedback and making sure we addressed everything, and just moving slow and steady to really just make sure we were doing everything we should. We've been working with the Beaver Creek Wetlands for many years. They have, they currently hold conservation easements, we meet with them on a regular basis, we take their feedback, we pretty much take their recommendations at face. And so we're, we're very involved in that process. I currently have seven kids in the Beaver Creek school system. They're all in Coy and Traybine Elementary at the moment. And so I have a vested interest in how this development goes, the impact it has. We have spoken to the Board of Education to get their input and how we could possibly make this better, and make this process smoother. And, because I intend to live in this neighborhood. I'm not just a corporation that's coming in to sell a bunch of houses and move to Florida. I actually intend to live in this, this neighborhood, and my brother does as well. And so we're, we, like I said, we have a very vested interest in how this goes. Max mentioned cookie cutter homes and some concerns about cookie cutter homes. I don't like cookie cutter homes either, so we don't intend to, to, to do that for this development. I know there's been a lot of discussion and information that's come in around traffic studies and traffic, you know, just the increase in traffic, and we have every intention to take that study and really understand what those impacts are going to be, and do what, what we need to do to make it right. Because again, I'm going to be living in this neighborhood, so I do also have a vested interest in, in how this goes. All right, thank you.
Is this zoning commission permitted to ask questions of the staff and/or the applicant at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, yes. So at this time, I'd like the board to have an opportunity to ask either the applicant or the staff any questions. Do you have any?
Hi, I'm John Hung. I got a question for Max to start with. Max, it's a little unclear to me from the package, but just to clarify, the parcel that will be sold to the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, that's currently the subject of a conservation easement to the state of Ohio's EPA, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that parcel itself will be sold and conveyed in whole, right? Okay. A second issue I have, Max, is you mentioned that you received a, a modified plan that included the streets, and that seems to me page 28 of the package, it's a, it's a topographical map slash kind of roadmap, do you see that? It's in Exhibit B.
Yeah, I believe this is what I showed here. I think it's on. Yep. So this is...
So this is, I wonder why it's not showing up here.
Maybe share screen, I have no idea.
Hold on, just need to, probably. Well, okay, so while I'm bringing this up, I don't understand what's, what the issue is here. But yeah, so page 28 of the package, the concept plan, what are your, what is your question? I'll try to bring it up.
So the question I've got here is, it's apparent to me from the concept plan that the streets are laid out in such a way that the portion, there is a portion of the property that's within the floodplain. And it, it looks to me that there's no streets there, so I presume that means that the applicant doesn't intend initially to develop the property. So if you see here, there's that area. Okay. So I guess the question is, was there ever any discussions about perhaps conveying that portion in the floodplain to the Wetland Association as well, given that since the properties are in the floodplain, I'm not sure if it's a very developed piece of land to begin with, you know what I mean? So was there any discussions about that or any suggestions related to that?
For our part, no. It wasn't ever suggested to the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association to, to purchase additional land. They were able to make this purchase of this wetlands area from a grant as well as a local funds match. So they would need to acquire additional funds to be able to purchase additional acreage. And also because it's not designated as a wetlands, it's not really something that the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, at least my understanding, is, is that's kind of why they're not interested in, in placing that under their conservation.
Okay. So I guess the follow-up question then would be for the applicant, and that is that there's a portion of property clearly within a floodplain here. Are there any future plans at this time to try to develop that area? And if so, wouldn't you agree with me that that would necessitate you perhaps coming back here or maybe submitting a different plan in the future? You might need to go back to the mic there, sorry mate.
Yes, we, we had initially considered putting some houses down there, but it is a bit of a daunting task to, to build that, and it just didn't seem all that feasible, as well as the distance to the wetlands and the conservation and talking to the wetlands. They weren't entirely happy that we were considering putting some, something up next to it, but, you know, they were, they said, you know, we'd have to evaluate it, we'd have to look at it. They said, you know, it would be helpful to have some buffer space between the neighborhood and the wetlands. But if we do decide that, you know, it is feasible at one point, you know, we'll, we'll definitely be bringing that back. And like Max said, there'd be a lot of stuff that would have to be done, a lot of conversations and agencies to be involved in, in that type of change.
Okay, so right now there are no plans to develop that because of how daunting it is, but you're leaving the door open for potential future development if those difficulties could be overcome?
Potentially, but I, I, I don't think it's all that feasible, but it's always possible.
Okay, thanks. No further questions.
Actually, I do, I have a question, Max. So I heard you mention earlier that this application is for a zoning map amendment, and we are look, we're talking about a rezoning from A1 to R-PUD, right? And if that is approved, then the next step is a specific site plan approval as well. What if the rezoning is denied? What would be the next procedural aspects if it's denied or what happens next?
Well, so if this commission recommends disapproval to the trustees, it will still go to the trustees for a vote. If the trustees vote to disapprove this rezoning, really the applicant has legal means, you know, a, a referendum essentially against the decision. You know, there are some other options available to the applicant that, you know, have not worked out well for the township in the past. We've had some experiences where, you know, let's say, for instance, in Nathaniel's Grove, that came down by consent decree. So what that means is, we, you know, we essentially worked to try and limit the density and some other issues with Nathaniel's Grove. It went to court. They took us to court and sued us and said, you don't have the right to do this. And a judge essentially told them that, yes, that's correct. And by judge decree, laid out the concept plan for that development, and we lost ability to, to have input there. So that's one way that, you know, denying a rezoning can eventually turn, and then the other thing that's happened is developers are, you know, say, okay, well, we'll, we'll go annex to the city or to Fairborn or to Xenia. There's been a number of annexations of township acreage over the last several years that almost always have resulted from the developer not feeling like they were able to use their land how they believed they should be able to use it. I'm not saying that this is going to be the case in this one. I can't speak for the developer. I'm just saying, those are things that have happened before in the past when the township has denied these kind of development progress. So what we are trying to do is, what we are trying to do is to guide it this, this way so that we can still retain some ability to, to sculpt and mold and instead of having a judge tell us how it's going to be or instead of, you know, completely having, losing the ability to have input because it's within a different jurisdiction, so.
Thank you.
I have a question. Your recommendation number one speaks to 58 acre area that will be the wetlands, and you have reported a density of 1.4 based on the 250 potential houses.
Sure.
Have we looked at, or has it been looked at, what that, because you want to count that wetlands as green space? So subtracting that 58 from that, what would that density then start to look like? Have you looked at that?
Sure, we can actually do a quick calculation right now to give you that idea. So it is 250 homes and it's 190, sorry, 100 and... Thank you. 177, let's say minus 58 acres leaves 119. So it'll be 250. So that density minus the wetlands would be 2.1 dwelling units per acre. Now, it's really important though to recognize that every PUD in the township has common open space, you know, detention ponds that are not realistically usable as common open space. They are, for the storage and flow of stormwater, counted as common open space. It's a, it's a very common practice to count land that may or may not be developable into homes as still part of the open space because it's usable by the residents, so. But to answer your question, minus that, 119 acres, 250 homes, 2.1 dwelling units per acre.
But the rationale has been based on the open space being usable community space, correct?
Correct. And that's, I mean, that's, you know, speaking with Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, it will be a public trail system. So it will be not only open to this community, but to the entire Green County community.
I have a couple of questions. First off, since we're talking about the open space, is there open space that's planned in this community? And if so, where is that? And where is the retention pond? Or where would any of that be placed?
Well, so that would be the kind of details that we'd work out during specific site planning. This is a very high level concept. This is, if I had to guess, this is what I think the roads would look like, you know? The specific site plan is, you absolutely must tell us where everything's going to go and it must get approved. And that's only through local too. It also goes through a county level kind of process with that. But at this time, where a detention pond might be located or even where, for instance, an individual storm pipe or where the sewers are going to go, that information's not available this time. That engineering has not been conducted yet. It will have to be, should they wish to move forward with the development of the parcel though.
Okay, and then my second one is, as we were just talking about this one parcel and not being able to develop like this lower section of it, is there a way in the future though that that's, that would be something that would change, that would make it something that would be something you would use to build in that area?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
So you had said how you're just going to do this one portion of it? I know, we don't have the map up there. But then there's a, still a section down here on the, kind of the bottom left on this side?
Yep.
So can you just, just restate what your reasoning is again for not, that you would not build in this area?
Well, you're, you're correct. There, there is some of that area down there that is not actually in the floodplain that we may or may not be using, or we may have to include things like retention ponds and other things that, you know, at this stage, you know, we just wanted to make sure we had some extra space for the specific site engineering to come in and actually do their thing. So it's pretty conceptual at this point.
Okay, and then also we had mentioned a discussion about the environmental impact. So there has not at this point been any type of environmental impact study done?
Correct. Other than speaking to the Wetland Society, no, there's not been.
Okay, and, and is there anything that the wetlands has provided us regarding thoughts on this impact?
Yeah, they did provide a letter of support for the project. It was not specific in any kind of, you know, mitigation strategies or anything like that, but a general letter of, we like this idea, we're excited about being able to add this to our inventory. So yes, we, we have had feedback from BCWA.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I have some questions again that came to mind. Do the wetlands fall under ODNR?
Could you elaborate just a bit?
Well, the jurisdiction of ODNR in terms of doing a comprehensive habitat study type thing.
You know, I, I would probably have to defer to Ed, our planner, on that one, to be honest with you. So I don't know if you're able to answer that, Ed? Thank you.
ODNR is doing an ODI, but can't do a habitat study. Does, does the wetlands fall under ODNR?
I think, does ODNR have jurisdiction over the wetlands?
The current status of the 58 acres that is under a sales agreement to the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association is that it is, there is already an easement on that property that's helped by the state EPA that is a water quality protection easement. That easement allows for continued agricultural use of that property, but no other uses. The easement proposed by Beaver Creek Wetlands Association and for which they have been awarded funding from ODNR would transfer that easement to Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, and in fact, would transfer ownership to the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, and it would be a more restrictive easement and would eliminate the use even of agriculture in that 58 acres. Frankly, it's one of the reasons that township staff got excited about this proposal in the first place is that Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, as part of their plan to, a plan in which the township has been a partner, to establish a, a walking trail all the way from the Creekside Trail to Pearls Fen in Fairborn through this Beaver Creek floodplain and, and, and wetlands and so forth. This particular acreage is, is an extremely valuable piece of that to the Wetlands Association. And so I, I, I thought when, when I talked to folks from Beaver Creek Wetlands Association and they told me they were interested in becoming technically a development partner in order to secure this easement, which is a very large easement, 58 acres is more than they typically get at one time, then we got excited about it too. So the way this easement would work then is that the Ohio EPA would transfer, they would relinquish their easement rights in favor of the Beaver Creek Wetlands Association, and, and they would take over. The only considerations that they would need to secure then would be access. And I believe those discussions have already begun between the Wetlands Association and the, and the owner, so. Does, I don't know whether that answers your question.
I appreciate the detail because I didn't quite understand the relationship with that. The next question I had was some things that have been documented recently about PFSAs and those being looked at through the direction of the governor. So my question is, does that, and that's usually watershed areas that I was understanding, does that also include wetlands? Do we need to be concerned about that?
The, it, no, that's a very interesting question. We just had a, a meeting yesterday. There's an ongoing working group under the leadership of a, of a consultant hired by the county sanitary engineering department to study the issue of PFOS, PFAS, basically Teflon and, and other pollutants in drinking water. It's, it's taking the form of a wellhead protection plan. And the most productive water wells in Green County are here in Beaver Creek Township, and, and the highest number as well. I mean, the, the three water wells just south of 35 have a capacity of some 6.2 million gallons per day, and there's room for more. We're, we're sitting on really rich aquifers that we have to protect. This particular acreage that we're looking at tonight has not appeared yet in any of the maps that we've looked at as part of that wellhead protection effort. We don't believe therefore that the evidence is showing that this surface water is within the five-year time of travel to the water wells. So now, that's not necessarily, this effort is ongoing, it's not necessarily done, but so far I haven't seen this area represented in any of the maps that that working group has been using to make some of the determinations of what we're going to do for a county-wide wellhead protection program.
Thank you for that. That's very important information. It's hard for us to make decisions. We don't have a crystal ball to know what the future looks like, and we take this part very seriously, so. Given that, I believe we are ready to open the public portion of the hearing if none of the other board members have any questions for the applicant or the staff. Hearing none, it is official that the open portion, a, a public portion of the meeting is open. How we ordinarily do this, ladies and gentlemen, is that we have about 50 people in here or more, and if I hear from everybody for a very long period of time, we'll be here till 5 o'clock tomorrow morning, and I really don't want to do that. So the best way to do this is orderly. What I'd like to do is give everybody who wants to speak a two-minute opportunity. What you'll do with that, where's my timekeeper? Tori here is going to help us with this, and so you'll come to the podium when, I'll, I'll do this in an orderly way. You'll come to the podium, you'll give your name and your address, and then she will start the timer and... address, and then she will start the timer, and you'll have the two minutes, and she will just tell you when your two minutes is up, and if we can all cooperate, that'll be good. Any of you who are researchers, you know, if we get to data saturation and we're hearing the same thing over and over again, I'll start to say, okay, does anybody else have anything different they need to say? So we'll start, we'll look at this in three sections. We'll start with those that are for the applicant, then we'll start with those who are against the applicant, and then those that just sit on both sides of the fence, okay? So for those, anyone who is for the applicant, like to come forward and state what it is that they would like to share. Okay, this is the last call. Perfect, okay. Those against the applicant, yeah, great, thank you. Let's make sure we can all hear you, so let's do a test on that.
Okay, check. Okay, very good. I am Mark DePadua. I live in Stone Hill Village at 1651 Ashmont Court, so we share about 280 feet of our backyard, borders on the property. The question we have here is the land suitable for residential? I would submit no. It's a decision you guys have to make, and I trust you'll make the right decision. And you nailed it. I'm thankful that you asked for that calculation. When you take the 50 acres out of the 177 acres, you do have a 1.4, I'm sorry, a 2.1 calculation of a home density per acre, which is not consistent with Spindletop, it's not consistent with the neighborhood to the west, et cetera, which Max indicated we're at 1.67 and 1.4 respectively. Also, our backyard floods. Every time there's a mild rain, it floods back there. With the lack of the floodplain being, you know, being moved around back there, I'm just concerned that there's going to be a bigger issue there. My wife and I walked the Wetlands from Rotary Park to where the Wetlands will be, and the amount of trash back there was appalling. I'm just thinking that trash is going to just get worse for that wetland area. And in my last minute, I will just say, if we do move to the next phase, I am really concerned about traffic, flooding, and sewage. From a traffic perspective, in Stone Hill Village, they are only allowed to have 12-foot wide driveways, that's just a design consideration there. That forces people to park on the road. So there's a lot more curbside parking that just needs to be considered when you start looking at taking cars as a throughway down Fair Trail. There's already a problem with what we have. The sewage demand of 200-plus homes with a lift station pushing up an eight-inch line on Fair Trail that is already servicing 150-plus homes in Stone Hill Village, sounds to me like a recipe for disaster from a sewage perspective. So I know that's not what we're dealing with tonight, appreciate that point, Max, but for the record, really concerned about sewage and really concerned about flooding, you know, in my particular neighborhood. Thank you.
Those are great, those are great comments. My name is Matt Davidson. I live in Spindletop as well, over on Huntland Court North, have for seven years, and I serve on the board of the Stone Hill, 1481 Huntland Court. I serve on the board of the Stone Hill Village Homeowners Association and live in Spindletop, representing those 157 homes. We received the notice, we appreciate the changes that were made, we appreciate that you're planning on living in this neighborhood. We received the dozens of letters the commission received from Spindletop residents alone for both the March meeting and for this one voiced the same concerns: housing density, appropriateness, amount of traffic, and the resulting decline in safety, access to the parcel, and infrastructure changes harming the environment and quality of life for existing township residents. So much of the same, same things. All we ask for, in addition to the requirements or in addition to the recommendations that you're making for the commission to approve, are documented proof of bona fide efforts and potential solutions to utilize as an access point and correct the current safety deficiencies of Ankeny Road. Current traffic patterns would have traffic, including school buses, utilize Fair Trail, small skinny road, as was said already, and Turfland Boulevard to Ankeny, for all traffic south to the schools and any point east on Dayton-Zenia Road. Ankeny access to the development also gives an easier link to the neighborhood from this particular fire station if needed. We'd also like you to require documented proof in the opinion of the Green County sanitary engineer on the realistic feasibility of those sanitary hookups for 250 homes in the parcel, as well as whatever is the optimum number if sanitary hookups are used. It was said earlier that this is just about, is this a good idea to put houses in this area? Well, it's a little bit more than that when we're talking 250. I'd like to see documented proof of feasibility of a lift station being added for the 250 homes, and the engineer's assessment of the propriety of this step, including pros and cons, including the effect on the environment and adjacent communities. Can I have your time, Ken? Ken's given me two minutes of his time.
No.
All right.
Hi there. Chet Bryant, 1234 Homestead Drive. Having been through this, I understand the approval here is probably a done deal, but I have a couple of quick questions for you. What office handles the site plan approval? What chance is there for public input as to if a site plan should be approved? And will the public be notified of a site plan review so that we would know to come give our input on that? Second topic and last question is, if the developer makes or improves a primary entrance or exit to this, is there any reason the secondary fire access can't be an auxiliary fire-only locked entrance similar to the entrances at Woodridge? For instance, the Fair Trail Street in Stone Hill might serve as a suitable auxiliary fire-only entrance as opposed to an actual roadway to the development? If you need me to repeat any of those questions, let me know. Those are my four questions for you. Thank you.
Mike, can you answer those? Sure, thank you.
Solutions, there is a list of things that must be provided for the site plan approval process. It's done in conjunction, working with the community planning and development department. Then, in addition to that, as part of the process, they will work with the fire department and a number of other agencies based on the recommendations. If this is approved and the recommendations by staff are approved, those agencies would also have to be involved at the site plan approval process. Then it would come before the zoning commission, just like tonight. It would be run very much like this tonight. There'd be staff recommendations, there would be input from the applicant, and then the public as well could give input. Just like tonight, anyone within 500 feet of the property would get notice of the meeting, as well as anybody else who requests to get notice. So, and then that site plan approval process comes, again, before the zoning commission for a recommendation to the Board of Trustees, and then there's another hearing before the Board of Trustees as well. So just like tonight's process, it's a two-step zoning commission then trustees, so would the site plan approval process.
I just want to add, too, that following the site plan approval, let's say that gets approved by the trustees, it has to go through Green County Regional Planning, the subdivision approval process. So that is a county-level approval. It involves the Green County engineer, sanitarians, the same people that are going to, that we're going to require approval for just to approve the site plan. Those are the same people that have to approve it at the county level to actually have it recorded, which essentially allows them to parcel out lots, to obtain building permits, and all the things that they need to do to actually build homes. That is yet another public process. It has to go through the county commissioners. So on top of the township-level ones that we've spoken about, there is a county-wide process for approving these neighborhoods as well. So I just wanted to make that clear. Thanks.
I'm Dennis McKay. I live at 1539 Tamara Trail. Wife and I, Rosemary, have enjoyed living on Tamara Trail for over 40 years. We're here tonight to lose our opinion and concern about the rezoning requested on this case. We are not unsympathetic for the rezoning request, but we're concerned about the number of homes being considered to be built within the development. As background, our development, Beaver Hills Estates, and our neighboring development, Hickory Hollow, our zone R1AA, and the minimum size in this, in these developments are one acre. Max alluded to the .4 houses per acre, I guess that includes green space and whatnot, but the minimum size lots are one acre. And we think it would be appropriate that in order to minimize the impact on the surrounding development, which is ours and Hickory Hollow, one-acre-sized lot should also be a requirement on a proposed development being contemplated. This is one of the criteria for a PUD zoning approval. Another criterion is the proposed development, quote, "promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the township." Being one of the closest neighbors, I don't see how having a development of 2.5 homes per acre with its attendant traffic flow and congestion would meet this particular criteria. My wife and I walk along Tamara Trail and Kingsway frequently, sometimes daily, and are fearful that the traffic associated with the ingress and egress along these roads would make our walking hazardous at best, if not extremely dangerous. We suspect that a large portion of the daily traffic associated with the new development will be using Tamara and Kingsway, and is definitely not conducive to our safety and welfare. As an example of traffic condensed in a gas line was recently put along Trayline Road right past Tamara Trail for the new fire station being built at the corner. The gas line construction vehicles just clogged our street up, and it was horrible. Thank you.
My name is Kenneth Jeter. My address is 1447, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Kenneth Jeter. I'm at 1447 Huntland Court North in Zenia, Stone Hill Village. There are a couple of concerns that we share regarding this proposal. One is whether there will be a consideration or increase in the tax base for the residents as a result of any utility upgrades associated with this development impacting the other neighborhoods. For example, plumbing, water pressure, those kinds of issues. Will the surrounding neighborhoods have to upgrade utilities in order to support this particular neighborhood that is going in? Water pressure concerns, will piping have to be upgraded, et cetera? As far as the new homes, water pressure is a great concern, obviously. Is there going to be documented proof of the feasibility of the lift station? Is that the answer? Or are there alternatives to lift stations such as attachments to existing sewage systems? Tax base, will residents be burdened with additional taxes as a result of this new neighborhood going in? I know a lot of burden is on the developer themselves, but as you look at the picture in total, how does this impact the surrounding neighborhoods in terms of any anticipated tax increases for utility upgrades, whether it's plumbing, electrical, et cetera? Other concern is the streets themselves for the neighborhood. As you provide connectors to the adjacent neighborhoods, will those streets require widening as a result of the increased traffic flow and to ensure that no traffic is being congested as you ingress and egress the area? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frank Staubel. I live at 1565 Kingsway Drive in Beaver Hills. A couple of things I'd like to bring out, too. We talked about the traffic, and I don't believe it was mentioned, that the zoning office estimated that we would have 2,500 vehicles a day coming in and out of the new development. Also, in Beaver Hills, we don't have sidewalks, and we're, we were an older neighborhood, but we're fortunate enough now to have young families moving in. They have kids. Those kids ride bicycles, they only have one place to ride it, on the street. That bothers me. And in addition to the safety concerns, I'm concerned about the property values. When we have a large number, volume of traffic, when we're going from a few cars a day coming out Kingsway to 20, say 1,250, half of them, that seems like that is not going to do anything for our economic standing. Finally, the approval of this PUD creates a unique situation for you because you're setting a precedent of allowing the developer to have all the traffic generated by his development go through existing neighborhoods. As an inquiry to the zoning staff personnel, Mr. Matt O'Connell, on March 13th of this year, he cannot give me one other case where that had ever been done before. Usually, they have access to the, what I call a feeder street or Gretz Street, not going through any other neighborhood. Also, we talked about the criteria that the zoning, the Beaver Creek Township zoning resolution requires. We don't seem to bother with answering those, and I'm not sure we can answer them. But my point is that there seems to be so many uncertainties or unknowns at this time, I don't know how you can make the decision. There's sewage problems, people are talking about traffic problems, water problems, densing. All those things have not been answered. Do we want to continue on, or do we want to have a more definitive answer? Thank you.
I live at the corner of Kingsway and Slater Court, 1695 West Slater Court. I'm going to stick to the topic that I guess we're supposed to be here about. I'm not going to talk about sewage or anything like that. It seems to me as though if we're talking about this acreage and the number of homes that are going to be in here, we're kidding ourselves, saying that two access points are reasonable. I understand that there's a requirement, if there are 30 or more units, that you have two access points. You don't have to have a very sharp pencil or a calculator to figure out if there are 250 units. It would seem intuitively that there should be more than two access points, which brings me, then, to the point about the third access point that I think is just completely, I don't understand why it's not happening. I think this land should be changed to, from agricultural to residential, I really do. But it seems to me as though part of the reason why we're not getting this third access point has to do with people that are involved in the development. I think they either live there, or their relatives live there, and they can be part of the solution to this. Okay, he's saying, no, I don't know. I don't know, okay? Whatever. But the point is, regardless, there seems to me like we have to find a way to get a third access point, and with the Wetlands being on one side and two highly residential areas on the other two sides, the only remaining side is a street that is made for more traffic than what these residential than what these residential ones are. So, I think that, I don't think this should be approved unless there's a third access point from Ankeny Road.
Thanks, Terry. And I'm Pete Garrish, and I live at the corner also of Slater and Kingsway on 1545 Kingsway. So any proposed zoning change to the residential development must be predicated upon the ability for the property to have the proper infrastructure. There's no doubt about that. And the ingress and egress is the big, big point here with this neighborhood. The Green County Regional Planning Commission even made the point that the feasibility must be determined for the access in and out of this place. So we live in a very low-density rural residential neighborhood in Beaver Hills Estates, and it's completely inappropriate to run the road through that neighborhood. I've lived here for twenty years, and many of my neighbors have been there twenty, thirty, forty years. It's completely inappropriate. This property is landlocked on all four sides. And for the committee here, you have to understand that the wetlands associate, the wetlands is part of it. All the rest of the land is completely landlocked. So the only access is either through 1121 Ankeny Road, which is part of the McIntyre Trust, or through our neighborhood. And we have been told 1121 Ankeny Road is not an option, over their dead body. And our neighborhood is no curbs, no streets. It's utilized by elderly people, by young people, by children at bus stops in the street. There's no way it's appropriate to run this, this access through this neighborhood. So that, that's, you know, that's the big thing. There's just, it's inappropriate. So we got to figure out how to get in and out of this neighborhood. So without the infrastructure, a plan in place to get in and out of this neighborhood, how can a determination be made if the zoning should be changed from agricultural to residential? There's no appropriate plan in place right now to access this property. And Terry made a great point. If it's through Ankeny Road and the density is smaller, which at some point we'll have that discussion with the township people, so, thank you.
Hi. Ride Cospoons, 1613 Kingsway Drive. More of the same. It really is about access to this neighborhood, and it's also about the drainage for this proposed neighborhood. If you're not going to do retention ponds, as most neighborhoods have, where is the water going? It's probably going into the wetlands. Polluted water from the streets, from oil in your cars and so forth, and that's not acceptable. I also think that if this is, if this is rezoned, which I disagree with, then maybe some of that land that was not purchased by the Wetlands Association, maybe that should be donated, the rest of it, to make it more open space. I mean, you could, you could argue that the, you know, someone made the argument that open space, or that the retention ponds aren't really quality open space, but, or the wetlands, too. Traffic is a really big deal. That third access point from Ankeny has to be further considered. I would, I would ask for the details of those discussions and as to exactly why Ankeny cannot be considered. What, what is the safety issue? Look, roads are modified all the time. Let's, let's, I'd like to know exactly why. And the individual that, that may be holding on to the land that, that isn't selling it, if that's the issue. How much has been offered? Was it $25? Was it $50,000? What, what was it? So maybe the developer needs to, to offer more money. Everybody has a price, right? And, and it would solve a lot of problems with that third access point. That's it. It's a rehash of what everyone else has set up here. This, this is only going to benefit one individual, that's the developer, and the surrounding communities are going to pay the price. Thank you.
Good evening. Derek Albert. I live at 1225 Ankeny Road. Just to clear the record, no member of the McIntyre family currently lives on Ankeny Road. It is all privately owned, and we wish to keep it that way. That's why, it's one of the reasons we're solely against any private access, or any access, public access to our private lane that we own and maintain. Second of all, throwing out all the development issues, I will say that I've heard fifty-eight minus seventy-seven several times in this meeting. I've never heard anything, anyone addressing the high tension power lines that run directly through the middle of this property and the unusable land that is associated with that. So those are the two issues I'd like to bring up. Thank you.
My name is Zach Farkas. 1675 Kingsway Drive. What is the legal weight of a staff recommendation? So we're listening and waiting for staff recommendations, and if they're going to be withheld, before this even gets approved, we won't know if that stuff's going to be with, actually go through or not. So if there's no legal weight behind a staff recommendation that allows them to do what they see fit after the fact? Just curious on that.
I, I've got my bike here. I just need to turn it off. May I go ahead and answer that, please? So, so our staff recommendation to them doesn't have any legal weight, but if they take the staff recommendations and turn them into essentially riders or amendments on the approval of this, then they, well, again, it has to be approved by the trustees. Again, this is a recommendation to the trustees. So let's say all the recommendations that we suggested, they include in their recommendation the trustees, and the trustees pass it as is with those recommendations, they then become law. So they will have a legal weight at that point. Until then, they don't.
And then the next question. I understand the 500 foot from the easements and everything like that for notifying people, but when 250 more houses are going to be built and off a street, I do believe that warrants more notification directly than through newspapers and internet, because that's definitely going to negatively impact so much more for safety and concerns like that.
Hi. I'm Cheryl Eskridge. I live at 1555 Tamara Trail and have for 27 years. The impact that you can't see in the future, I can tell you what's happened in the past. We used to ride our bikes down to the trestle, which is now the bike trail, and ride, you know, with no problem, and now we cannot. We can't walk it, so we're forced to walk our neighborhood, which is fine. We like our neighborhood. Please consider not even using our neighborhood to go through. We have children, we have grandchildren. There's a concept. My grandchildren play outside. They have an hour a day that they play on their computers. They're outside when I have them in the summer. We have a lot of road fundage, and they, they play in the street. They, they ride their bike in the street. I, I just can't think of, you know, just, I know I'm not getting the water, just since Stone Hill. We don't have the water runoff anymore that we used to have. Used to be plenty of water in, in our yard that kept everything. Now we're having to water. We didn't used to have to water like that. Now that big pond's there, taking all the runoff. And, you know, like, there is an impact. There will be an impact, and it may be too late.
Hi. My name is Heidi Menke. I live at 1567 Stormy Court in Beaver Hills, which I'm right off of Kingsway and Tamara Trail. And I just wanted to also voice the very big concern of having that large of a development down the road from us. We have a lot of people that walk the, the streets, walk their dogs, kids are walking, and so it's a big concern. And then, so the traffic that I feel will be routed on Kingsway will be enormous with that kind of density in, in the neighborhood next door. And then I haven't heard anybody speak about, but I'm even thinking about the intersection of Kingsway and Fairground Road, right just shy from the intersection of Traybine and Fairground Road. And that will be where the traffic will get backed up, and it'll just be very dangerous for that much traffic, which, for all the homeowners that live there and walk the street. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
My name is David Gouda. I live at the 1619 Fair Trail West, which is the corner of Fair Trail West and Turf Land. The one question I have is, as part of the study that you're going to be doing on this traffic, is that going to include the speed? And here are my concerns. It sounds like tonight you've already made the decision, no access off of Ankeny Road, and I understand that. But when I looked and I tried to look at some of the views, it looks like it's about 2,600 feet off of Fairground Road to get back to the new neighborhood, and the same off of, of Traybine Road. It's about 2,600 feet, or about 700 feet, I think, off of Ankeny. My concern is, you got two ingress egress points, but this new neighborhood, you're going to have people trying to get home. What's going to happen is, the speed, I'm worried about the speed of those vehicles because the neighborhoods they're passing through, it's not theirs. They want to get home. I understand that. I used to live over in, in Stone Falls, Hillsdale Drive. For many years, they did not have any speed bumps, and then they had to put speed bumps in. That's what I'm concerned about. One other thing, Fair Trail West, the street I'm on, it's not super wide. Maybe wide enough? I don't want to have to give up any of my front property at all to widen it. Is that being considered?
So again, those are the kind of considerations that are made at the specific site plan portion. Now, as I explained earlier, we gave the concept plan to the Green County engineer, who handles traffic in the county. Okay? She's our engineer as well. She did not raise any immediate concerns with what she saw, told her where the ingress egress was going to be. So she requested a traffic impact study be done for the specific site plan portion of the hearing, which is what we require anyways. But that is what she can actually review and actually make the recommendations that you're trying to talk about. What speed limit needs to be done? Do any, do any upgrades need to be made to the intersection of Fair Trail Way, or I'm sorry, Fairgrounds Road and Kingsway? Those are some of the things that I've already discussed with the engineer initially, but she, she can't make a true determination until she looks at an actual plan, until she looks at, "This is what we want to do," and then she can make specific recommendations about what would need to be done in order to accommodate that. We're not quite there yet, but we are definitely going to do that because we have the same concerns you do. We don't want to see our residents hitting each other in cars at the intersection. You know, we, we have these same concerns. I, I don't know how else to say it other than that. That traffic impact study must meet the standards of the Green County engineer, and her standards are going to be much higher than any of our individual standards. So I hope that helps with your concerns a little bit. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Laura Porter. I live at 1223 Ankeny, and I am on the south end of the property in a white farmhouse. And my question to the board and to Mark is, how are you going to protect my well water? And I'm not going to speak on behalf of my neighbors, but I have well water, and that is my main drinking source. How is this new development, is it going to be, is it going to protect my main source of drinking water?
Good evening. I'm Charlotte DeLong. I live at 1566 Tamara Trail. I disagree with this rezoning. I understand it's probably a done deal. I think there's room for compromise. One, it needs to be rezoned to match the existing communities that the traffic will go through. It's like putting four-inch pipe into a two-inch pipe. It's just not going to work. Then you've got the public parking. So not only do you have the houses, but you're planning on putting some trails back there, maybe a parking lot, and signs, I read, to tell people how to get to these trails. Now you've got massive property or public going through our small community. This is really going to impact our standard of living. We moved there because it was countryfied, because we could walk the streets, because we could have our kids and grandkids out there, walk our dogs safely. We're not going to be able to do that. One contradiction that I have had and that I've noticed since this is going on, a couple of years ago, we wanted to build a beggar barn. I went through all the variances. I went through everything I was supposed to do. I did my package, and I got a call before the, the meeting, just like this, that said, "No, we're going to disapprove you. I wouldn't recommend doing it, and the reason we're going to disapprove you is because you own a business and you have employees." Now, mind you, those employees do not come to my home. But we were denied because of the traffic and how it would affect the community that our employees would be coming through. If we have only less than ten employees, how is that going to impact compared to 250 homes and public access to, to a trail? That is complete contradiction. We need to get that straight. Thank you.
I'm Debbie Heidrick. 1650 East Slater Court. I'm asking the board to deny this application. In your rules, 17.06.9 of the criteria says, quote, "The proposed development promotes the health, safety, general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the township." Asking the residents of Beaver Hills to live with years of construction of dust, noise, debris, and heavy equipment along a small road, and, and also permanent and substantial increase in daily traffic, does not meet this criteria. Beaver Hills is a low-density development where the residents walk, run, ride their bikes, walk their dogs. The volume of traffic that the development will bring will completely eliminate those activities for safety reasons. An appropriate separate entrance is not available on Ankeny Road, we are told, due to a lack, it seems like, a lack of foresight on behalf of the applicant. The fact that they've managed to landlock their own property is not a cost that the residents of Beaver Hills should have to pay.
Ann, may I, may I respond just a little bit? Do you mind? Is that our? Oh, can you hear me? Okay. Ann, if you don't mind, I just wanted to, there's a, a point that I'd like to make, and I've heard it a lot so far, that, you know, the landlocked parcel, that's a mischaracterization. There are two sub-streets that connect to that parcel, which is a non, non-cul-de-sac end to a street. It is almost always a indication that that street will continue further. So I need to be very clear, this parcel is not landlocked. Okay? It's really important to recognize that. So thank you.
Okay. All right. My name's Jeff Vath. I live at 1485 Huntland Court in Spindletop, so I'm 135 feet from the property. So people have a lot of good points. I'm in favor of the Beaver, the wetlands, but I almost feel like it's a bait and switch. So to use it in the computation of the number of homes per acre, I think is a fallacy. I think you need to take that out. So 2.1 is probably the right answer. And I want to think Mr. McIntyre is honest and transparent, but what concerns me is the McIntyre family sold three of their personal properties that had joined this property in the last year and a half. Why did they sell those properties before this became public? That smells. So I really think the board needs to consider that. Putting 250 homes back there is a joke, and like somebody said, four, putting a four-inch pipe into a two-inch pipe, it doesn't work. So those are just some of the issues. I just think this is wrong. It is landlocked. So if you look at the density they're talking about putting in there, and the number of houses that are currently, you're probably going to increase traffic 500% houses that are currently, you're probably going to increase traffic 500% or more through these neighborhoods that are adjacent. That's it. Thanks.
Okay. My name's Tyler McCoy. I live at 1221 Ankeny. And I'm going to follow that up. I am the sole owner of 1221 Ankeny. I moved there a year and a half ago, under the premise that we are moving to a isolated farm house. We were, I asked a question, we were buying the house, is this going to stay farmland? We were told it is. We have a son that has lost his eye to eye cancer. That's why we moved there. So this holds near my heart. Okay? Ankeny is a private lane for our four homes, and it will remain a private lane. It is not a public road. Secondly, there is already massive discharge from Stone Falls into my yard when it rains. I want assurance that we will not have further flooding in our property because of this new development. Also, like my neighbors, we want our well filled protected. I want assurance of that. If you look at the number of people that came out here tonight, you can either go for future constituents that are going to move in here, or you can look at the number of people that are against this. So who do you represent? Current or future tax-paying members of the township? This is clearly a no-win for the current residents of the area. So how you vote tonight will determine how these township residents look to your guidance in the future. Look to the turnout. Who was for it? Who was against it? The number, you know, the numbers that Max gave were wrong, miscalculated. What other information has been miscalculated or not fully given by the developer? He says he's going to live there. Where is he going to live in that area? What property of that part of it is going to be his? 250 homes is way too many. If you're going to approve residential, yes, five acres, that's fine. We understand the current owner of the farmland can do what he wants, but it should match the existing area. Thank you.
Brent Huntsman, 1560 Kingsway Drive. As stated in section 17.06.9, the township resolution, a PUD zoning classification, shall only be approved when the 10 governing criteria are satisfied. In review of the updated submission by the applicant, in this case, many of the criteria remain unsatisfied. This is mainly due to the applicant's desire to develop this property at its highest density. This should not be permitted. The zoning commission trustees, township trustees, should deny this request as proposed. It is a misconception, a fallacy, that the current proposed high-density PUD minimizes impacts on the surrounding development. Planned accessibility using existing roads through established neighborhoods destroys the existing residence's general welfare and significantly increases safety hazards to all. These unnecessary negative impacts to adjacent neighborhoods would be eliminated if the proposed rezoning request for such high density would utilize other means of ingress and egress, or if the requested density would be lower for such as a R1AA zoning. If the applicant wants to continue to pursue the RPUD, they may overcome some of the challenges with the floodplain, wetlands, easements, and it being least disruptive to the existing neighborhoods, I suggest the zoning commission use the adjacent Hickory Hollow RPUD development as an initial design template by excluding the undevelopable areas such as wetlands for making their density calculations. Thank you.
My name is Ken Jackson. I live at 1531 Heatherwood Trail in the Hickory Hollow Development. Hurrah. My concerns, my property does abut the property in question. There's no question of it being a 100-year floodplain. It's more like a five-year floodplain. My backyard is typically underwater at this time of the year. This is unusual this year. I'm worried that as they develop their property, that it's going to push that water onto my and my neighbors' properties. That said, same water being pushed onto my property also makes me question my well quality, also brought up here. My third issue is traffic. Traffic on Fairgrounds Road is abominable. There are times in the morning you cannot make a left-hand turn onto Beaver Valley Road. If you do, you take your life in your own hands. You know, to put another 500, 5,000, whatever it is, something has to be done about mitigating the traffic on Fairgrounds Road, Traybine Road. Again, the point of putting a four-inch pipe into a two-inch waterway, a two-inch road, this has got to be considered. You can't put 250 houses back there. You know, if you were to put five-acre developments, I'd be fine with that. 250 homes, it's not even rational. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Mukai, 1539 Tamara Trail. I have a question for the board. I was wondering if any of you have driven back to this property that we're talking about? Has anybody gone down Kingsway, Tamara Trail, Stone Hill Village? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of the situation and of what everybody's talking about. Thank you.
You'll pardon me, but I'm a Purdue man. I just wanted to point out my house, and Tom Smith, address is Preston Wood Court South in Stone Hill Village. Oh, 1363. In fact, my house is one of the highest points in the county, so the floodplain can't get to me unless it gets to everybody else first. But I do know that when I first moved out to Stone Hill, there was talk about other access points. But Fair Trail is one block long. Any bus that leaves the new area, so to speak, and comes out on Fair Trail's got one block. If there's any cars parked in the street, the bus is probably going to clip one of them on the way out. Fire, same way. You're wider than most cars. I don't know if it's wide enough or not, but coming down Fair Trail is tight. It's only one block long. In order to get to it from the fire station, from the new station, you've got to turn right on Turf Land and make another left, and then almost an immediate right to get on Fair Trail. Traffic has cars parked on those streets because even on Turf Land, it's a little tight when you get down close to Fair Trail. I don't know if anybody knows that, or I'm sure you've noticed it. Every time I leave my house and I drive around Turf Land, it's tight. And if cars are parked on both sides of the street and right opposite each other, that's even tighter. I don't understand why you would want to take a landlocked piece of land, and this is landlocked. There's no doubt about it. Coming in, my neighbors, I watched the houses to the north be built years ago on five-acre lots because they wanted a little bit of privacy. And of course, that was septic and sewer, or septic and water well at the time. But they needed their privacy. They wanted that. They should still have it. And the zone, zoning board shouldn't take that away from them. I guess that's all I've got time for him. Hail Purdue.
I have a time of about 9:15. Is that where we are? Yeah, 9:13. So I'm starting to hear the pattern, right? We're getting to data saturation, and it's around traffic, flooding, density, access. I think I got them all. Egress, ingress, right? Water, water, water. Yes, water, water. So I guess at this time, I'd like to know if there's anybody who has anything additional that they want to bring forward so that we have that clear, so I can start to set some limits. Yes. He has a question he wanted to ask.
A follow-up question.
He's just asking a question.
I would just like to know if we're going to be given any detailed information regarding... Oh, okay. Rod Cosbun, 1613 Kingsway. I would just like to know if we can receive more, well, any information, preferably detailed information regarding Ankeny. I mean, we're told that, you know, the seller isn't going to sell, or that the owner isn't going to sell that space to get through. But I think I heard something about the fact that Ankeny was too dangerous because of the curve.
So, you know, I appreciate that question, but I believe that the landowners spoke into that. And so for us to have, we can't really provide you with any more information on that.
Well, I, I mean, this is a big deal.
It is a big deal. That's why we're here.
But behalf of the answer, too, was the fact that Ankeny was too dangerous or something because of the curve, which I think is nonsense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. All right. So, thank you for your question.
My name is Janet Huntsman. I live at 1560 Kingsway Drive, and I've lived there for 43 years. I would have the same things to say about the density and the traffic and so forth and so on. But just one little thing. Under, in this staff report, under purpose and use, the applicant wants approval for additional permitted uses and conditional uses that are normally reserved for low-density districts, as ours, Beaver Hills Estate, which is zoned R1AA. These uses include not only trails, but parks, playgrounds, public community center buildings, agro-tourism, pedestrian recreational facilities, and parking lots with signage planned to access these uses, all of which would add to the already high traffic volume. I mean, this sounds more and more like it's going to be, all I can think of is like Kings Island with all these other, they keep adding more and more on. So in the pedestrian recreational uses and the parking lots, it just sounds like an amusement park. So you can imagine what that would attract, not only the local people, but this is all public, all the outside, too. So we can't have any more on top of the 250 homes. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So at this point, we usually move into a hearing from anybody that's not really for it, not really against it, or is there any such person or people in the room? Okay. Given that, we can choose to close the public portion of the meeting, given some sort of a motion, or given time, we can keep it open and re-adjourn to have more discussion at a later time. We are looking at the time of going on 9:30 at night. Listening.
I'd like to move to adjourn this meeting for now, so that we maybe can deliberate at another time, because I think this is going to require some deliberation by us.
Let me clarify your motion. To adjourn but not close the public portion of the meeting, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, no, second?
Second.
May I just weigh in? Dawn, forgive me if I'm wrong here, but they may want to make a motion to continue the hearing to a given date and time. Is that correct?
We're going to move to that next.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. So given that, I think we're to a place where I have a second, and need to make a decision. And was to keep the public portion of the meeting open, that we want to adjourn this evening, keep the public portion open, and then after we do that, we'll discuss a date and a time for reconvening. Okay, now I need a little help making certain we can get a time and a date. How do you want to handle that, staff?
We have a, you know, I'd recommend actually doing it on the next regularly scheduled zoning commission hearing, which I believe is May 6. I'll have to take a look at the exact date. That'll be the first Thursday of May. So, yes, Thursday, May 6, would be your next regularly scheduled zoning commission hearing. I'd recommend continuing it to that date.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay, ready for a vote on the fact that we'll reconvene May 6, 7:30, at our regularly scheduled zoning commission meeting?